For today, discussion of the Hawkins County Schools reopening plan for the 2020-2021 school year. Mr. Ickes?
Thank you. I'm gonna read, start my, my statements this morning about the opening plan by stating that I want to be clear at the onset of this, that at this point, and at this point only, with the data stating we are below the baseline threshold of 10 new COVID-19 cases per 100,000 county residents for the last 14 days, we are planning to open as usual with procedures and precautions in place. One thing that was listed in the newspaper article that ran a couple of days ago that may not have clarified that we do have procedures and precautions in place, it's not an as-usual opening. What that should have said is, we are planning at this point, given the data at this point in time, today, July 8th, we would go ahead and open with precautions in place to run an in-class seating, an in-class instruction for our students. I recently, two days ago, received a, an update from our health director, regional health director, Dr. David Kerski, and I wanted to read that first. Considerations for school building closure. All policy considerations should start with the goal of having students physically present in school. However, districts are encouraged to develop criteria for the consideration of closures of schools and/or the entire district. Every effort should be made to prevent a district-wide closure, and district administrators should consider it appropriate to close one school or even a portion of a school when a case or small outbreak affects only a small number of students or staff. Closure should be as limited as possible to minimize the spread from close contacts with the case. District administrators are strongly encouraged to consult with state or local public health officials prior to finalizing a decision to close a school or district. It is critically important that schools be able to pivot from in-person to distance learning so that disruption can be minimized, while students and staff need to be away from school for extended periods of time. District administrators are encouraged from, are discouraged from using metrics such as county active case rates as the sole determinant of school or district-level closures. With that being said, the primary data that we are using is not only EPI curves that I mentioned earlier, which is the 10 new COVID-19 cases per 100,000 within the last 14 days, but it is one piece of the data that we review weekly with the regional health office. In our plan, you will see that there are three categories, a green phase, a yellow phase, and a red phase. When we get to red, everything's closed. When we're in yellow, we're in a hybrid situation, given the category, and I'll go over the categories here in a second. We're in a situation where we could be looking at hybrid situations for learning, where we're bringing students in a couple of days a week, they're online a couple of days a week, and everybody's virtual one-day week, for example. And that example is provided in the plan. But we are doing exactly what Dr. Kerski and others have advised us to do, and that is to develop a plan for if our data shows that we can operate school as normal with students in the classroom. We have that plan in place. We have a plan in place for a hybrid model, and we obviously have to have a plan in place should we have to close across the board or any given point within the school system. So, the areas that we looked at were class size and spacing, student screening, COVID-19 testing protocols, student group activities, extracurricular activities, athletics, the use of personal protective equipment, cleaning protocols, student transportation, medically fragile students and staff, and the instructional program as a whole. The written plan that you all were emailed last week, it'll go out to the entire community. The summarized chart is a, is a simpler version, an at-a-glance version meant for our parents to easily, easily look at and identify what's going on at the school and why. So if their student comes home and says, "Mom, we were, we were encouraged to walk down the hallway on the right side if we were going towards the office and coming back from the office or restroom walking on the left side," for example. That would be, that would be an example of something that the school has put into place because of something going on, and they can quickly reference that chart and see why. So the, the two differences there between the chart and the written plan are simply that the chart's easier to reference and look at. These are both skeletal frameworks, as I told the board earlier this meeting. Detailed site-to-site plans will be fleshed out over the next several weeks as a, and this plan will be used as the framework for those detailed plans when principals come back over the next few weeks. We will be meeting the afternoon of July 16th with principals and again on the 23rd. In addition, we are working to develop an extremely detailed continuous learning program for the Department of Education, which is due to them by July 24th. But in addition to the plan you have in front of you, we are working on a multiple-page, detail-by-detail look and plan that has to go for review to the Department of Education later this month. This will be developed with central office, site admin, site teachers, and support staff input. This draft is already underway, and it will be shared with the board once it's finalized and through that process, but our timeline is very, very short. This plan, as with the continuous learning plan, will be fluid and will be tweaked to reflect current data as we move forward. We will always act with regard to student and staff safety first. Let me cover a couple of highlights, and then we'll dive into the plan. Attendance incentives. As you've heard this afternoon from Greg and from Teresa, we are removing attendance incentives for students, and the board took action on that earlier. That's to encourage parents to make those tough calls and err on the side of safety. If a student has symptoms or feels ill, we want them to stay home, and we want to encourage that, so we are removing those attendance and staff attendance. And we've talked a lot about this, but I want to get it on record. We will close, we work closely with all staff during this time. Staff are encouraged to communicate directly with their supervisors regarding any concerns. Personnel department, led by Teresa Drennan, will work with any employee who may become ill, has underlying health concerns, or who may need accommodations because of those. For example, if a medical diagnosis is provided, the staff member will be afforded appropriate leave in accordance with local, state, and national leave programs included, including but not limited to the Family Medical Leave Act, the Extended COVID Medical Leave Act, and accumulated sick leave if appropriate. This will be done confidentially and on a one-to-one basis. Staff will be provided any personal protective equipment they feel they need to perform their job safely on a daily basis. We encourage them to act on their own behalf regarding their safety unless we feel the need to step in and direct them in direct use of that equipment. Use of personal protective equipment will be largely left up to individuals, and those decisions will be respected and supported. Both Becky Little and Erica Phillips have worked with TIMA, EMA, and other local resources to secure masks, thermometers, gloves, and sanitizer for all sites, and extracurricular and sports teams, and those are in use at this current time. School events, such as back-to-school bashes and family-oriented events for the early fall, will likely be modified to maintain social distancing. For example, drive-through or virtual events will occur. If COVID landscape remains hot or remains on an increased level going into later fall, parent conferences will likely be done over the phone or virtual as well. For those who are truly concerned, we will meet individually with those parents and explore other options. As a reminder, we opened an additional 110 spots in the Hawkins County Virtual Academy to accommodate not only the COVID, but the increased interest in students attending the virtual academy. Current in-house virtual delivery models may be applied to those who are concerned but who do not feel appropriately placed in the virtual academy, and those, again, will be on a one-to-one basis. Plan for a safe return and reopening, again, covers those areas that I talked about. I want to highlight class size and spacing. So, class size and spacing is one of the things that I've received emails about regarding the classroom arrangements. In the green level, which we're currently residing, even with the increased uptick, we're still under that baseline that I referred to earlier. If we were to open under the green level, changes to class sizes and spacing would be unnecessary. Students can resume in normal seating. That does not mean that we're not encouraging and watching those students and monitoring those students for proper distancing inside the classroom, in the hallways, cleaning, hand cleaning, sanitizing, that type of thing, and encouraging those on a daily basis. And it even states there in the second bullet, Hawkins County staff will encourage all students and staff to practice social distancing and self-care protocol. Now, if you move down to yellow, what happens if we have an increase in level of cases between now and August 4th, and we have to start the school year on a yellow phased implementation? We would, for example, in the class size spacing category, we would arrange all desks facing the same direction toward the front of the classroom with as much space between them as possible. Students would either wear masks, use a physical barrier to the side of the desk, or social distance themselves at least six feet apart if they felt they didn't want to wear a mask. And again, this is largely a parent and a student decision. We don't have the wherewithal to mandate those types of things in the classroom under the current setting. Students should try to maintain six feet of spacing between themselves and students as much as possible, but should wear masks if they need to work closer than six feet with students. Large-scale assemblies of more than 50 students would be discontinued under the yellow phase. That just gives you an example of what we would do with class size spacing and class size arrangements. Let me talk about the COVID-19 testing protocols. Screening of students under the green level, at this time, the CDC recommends temperature screening of students upon entry only if feasible for the situation and the phase of implementation. So, under green, students are allowed to enter/exit the building using normal procedures. No unscheduled visitors are allowed under green. We're trying to keep visitors and non-staff and non-student personnel to school sites at a bare minimum. Parents should check students' temperatures at home every morning using oral tempatic or temporal scanners. Students with a temperature of 100.4 or above should stay home and consider coronavirus testing if no other explanation is available. You'll notice a lot of words such as "should" or "shall," those types of things, because a lot of things we can't mandate, but we are encouraging and we're making, and we're putting these recommendations in writing, because this, the success of opening and operating schools, whether we're in classroom settings or virtual, is dependent upon our support from parents. Parents should ask their students, under the, under the green level, for screening. They should ask their students on a daily basis how they feel, if they, if they're experiencing coughing, congestion, shortness of breath, gastrointestinal symptoms, and they should do so on a daily basis. Any positive COVID symptoms should prompt the parent to keep the student home from school. And again, any successful implementation of this plan and our educational protocols moving forward are going to be dependent upon parental support and collaboration with the school system. Move down to yellow, within the protocols for screening students, you'll notice that it states differences. Students are allowed to enter the building at only one to two locations and must exit from other positions to keep traffic moving in a single direction. Parents are not allowed in the school except under extenuating circumstances. Adult entering the building for appointments and predetermined visits should wash or sanitize their hands upon entering the building, should practice social distancing, and should wear masks. Again, those are things that, at this point, we cannot mandate. If there are extenuating circumstances that necessitate a parent entering the school, only one parent per child will be allowed to enter the school to minimize the number of people entering the, entering the school site. Strict records, including day and time, should be kept of non-school employees entering and exiting the building in case there is a positive case identified down the road. So, if Judy comes and visits our school site, she has a, an appointment with the vice principal, she signs in, she washes her hands prior to entering the building, she signs in, she sits down and holds, and conducts the meeting, and it's determined that she was identified as a positive after the fact, we need to know when she was on our school site so that when the health department comes, we can determine what that interaction was. This is not a acting mechanism. We don't want to get into personal rights, but when we're asked those questions from the, from the health department, we've got to be able to answer who that person may have interacted with so that we can protect our staff and students. Get to red, again, schools are closed. There's no additional responsibilities underneath that screening because it would then fall under parental guidance at that point. Let me move on to positive tests. In the event of a positive test among staff or student, the classroom areas exposed will be immediately closed until cleaning and disinfection can be performed. If the person was in the school building without a face mask or large areas of the school were exposed to the person, short-term accommodations may be required to clean and disinfect larger areas. This decision will be made with the regional health department and Hawkins County schools. The health department will be responsible for any and all contact tracing and will advise the school system on next steps. And that's because they are the expert once a, once an illness is identified. And then you see underneath there, dining is talked about. For example, if we're in green, we're trying to rotate tables so that the students are not in all one area of the cafeteria, for example, so that a class coming in may sit in a far corner, the next class coming in sits in the front corner while the back corner is completely cleaned and disinfected. It's just logistics at this point. That's green. When we move to yellow, we're probably going to, as the plan suggests, have to be extremely flexible and have students social distance, grab their lunch in the cafeteria, and proceed back to the classroom to minimize exposure to other students who are in the cafeteria. So those types of things are in the plan and will be detailed out when we get together with our, with our principals and teaching staff. Athletic activities. Under the green level, which we're currently under, we're under an executive order, an extended executive order right now, which prohibits contact sports from, from, from having students contact one another. So, football is out right now except for cardiovascular training, weight training, running of drills, that type of thing, if they can work within the existing executive order. If we open school under green and that executive order has expired, all activities are allowed to continue per normal procedures, but we would continue cleaning and disinfecting on a heightened sense of practice. Spectator events are allowed per normal procedures at that point, but that right now is not, that's not in existence because we're under the executive order that limits those types of things. Under the yellow, for example, a difference would be that only sports that can be modified to allow physical distancing for conditioning are allowed to continue, preferably outside. Off-site, inter-school competitions may be held. Face masks are encouraged when appropriate. Spectators fewer than 50 are allowed, provided that face masks are encouraged by observers at all times. Large-scale spectator events with more than 50 are not allowed, just as a couple of highlights there. Under yellow, weight room and physical, physical conditioning activities should only be used with proper social distancing, and that is because you can't do some of those things with a mask on. locker rooms and group-changing areas should be closed unless social distancing may be observed. And so on. If you get down to the last section of this plan, it is the instructional piece, and I'll flip to that real quick and go over that. Instructional protocols. All teaching with the, except, under green, all teaching with exception of those enrolled in the Hawkins County Virtual Academy, homebound education, dual enrollment courses, or other virtual offerings will be performed in classrooms with students and teachers present. Attendance will be monitored, but parents and students are encouraged to take necessary precautions to avoid contracting and spreading of the COVID-19 virus and/or other seasonal illnesses. And remember, we're starting the school year under COVID-19, but we're heading right into flu season not too long afterwards. If students are sent home for more than one day, work will be provided for home, or a device will be checked out to the student for access of the classroom instruction as appropriate, and that's what we referred to earlier. So if the student is going to be out for multiple days, they will be given not only busy work, that's, that's what we had to rely on a lot of times over the last several months because we were on that extended closure. We want the work to be meaningful. We want it to be as if, as close to possible as classroom instruction that they would be receiving in the classroom. So, in most cases, when that student goes out for an extended amount of time, they will be given a device and instructions on how to access their teacher's instruction or a replacement instruction if their teacher is not currently online. Yellow. Under instructional protocols, yellow, hybrid instruction models will be used. And we listed one there as an example. The one that was the most widely supported was the Group A, Group B. That is, Group A being on campus Monday, Tuesday, Group B either being on campus Wednesday, Thursday, or Thursday, Friday with one day that's completely virtual and in which, at which point that, that entire site is disinfected. Students with siblings will be kept together on the same schedule. Students will be checked out devices for virtual learning, and all school facilities will be deep cleaned on the off days when students are not present. Bus transportation under the yellow will continue, but distancing efforts and familial seating will be enforced. I skipped the bus section earlier, but we, under green, for example, we are still encouraging every single bus driver to have families sit together. And the thought behind that is, in working with our regional health department, is that we're limiting exposure to one family to another by keeping the siblings together seated on a bus. We're not splitting up the three brothers and sisters that get on a bus, and they each sit with a different family and potentially spread things to one another, even though, again, kids are largely unaffected by this, thankfully. We can't assume that that's going to continue, though. But as I stated, those bus drivers will social distance, and they'll keep family members seated together. Hybrid models will be terminated as soon as it's deemed safe to return all students to school sites. As I mentioned in, in Dr. David Kerski's opening statement, we shouldn't view when we have to close schools as a, as a permanent solution. We need to, our goal would be to mitigate whatever increases our, our work are going on in the community through support with our local health agencies, and as soon as it's deemed safe to return to school, we do so. Now, if we're in, under full closure and we see those trends heading downward and we're coming back to school, it may not be that we head back to a full-bore open school. It may be that we transition back to a hybrid and then back to green if that continues. But our goal is to get students back into the classrooms, if it's, if it's at all safe. Any changes will be communicated directly from the central office and relayed via the Hawkins County website, social media, and parent contact numbers and email through our Skyward system. Again, when we hit the red level under the instructional protocol section, all students will be moved to remote video conferencing platforms with the exception of the following, and I wanted to clarify this. You had a really hard time thinking about how kindergartners learn virtually. You had a really hard time thinking about first graders and second graders learning foundational reading skills through virtual instruction when they have very short attention spans. But what we're proposing in this plan is that kindergarten, first, second grade, special needs students, and tier-three intervention students will, would continue in-person instruction if at all safe, even when we're closing schools to everybody else. So we would bring in small groups of kindergartners, first and second graders, special needs students, and those that need the most academic intervention, and we would spread those students out among the school sites, and we would still provide face-to-face instruction if the regional health department feels that that's still safe to proceed in that manner. And the reason we believe strongly in that is because those are your foundational reading levels. Those students are those that need additional guidance and support, and we can best do that if we have them in our physical locations. Teachers will teach largely from classrooms if deemed safe, and that means they're going to show up to work each and every day as long as, again, we're not under any mandates or orders. And they would perform their, their teaching in their classrooms and record those lessons. So again, the preferred model would be what Mr. Larkin stated, and that would be that those teaching lessons would be done live-stream. But in cases where they can't access that or they have conflicting schedules, those lessons would be archived and made available to them. Wi-Fi hotspots will be established and maintained at all school sites on the exterior of the buildings for download and upload of all materials by those who do not have ready access to the internet at their home location. Terminations will be made in collaboration with the regional health department and the healthcare community, and any changes will be communicated, as I stated earlier. On a special note, special education students, all instructional accommodations and interventions will be based on, and will be continued to be based on, each individual education plan for each student, and will reflect the IEP team's decision. So, again, in partnership with parents and our staff, when we hold those IEPs, it's very, very critical that we consider what happens to those accommodations if we go into, into a hybrid or a full closure situation, because we still are legally responsible for maintaining those accommodations and intervention. That's a brief overview. It's before you. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read through it, and it did come through a little bit small, so.
Okay. Question, Ed. If students cannot, I mean, we're still going to do, or try to do, social distancing, right? Okay, so, and I understand about mandating masks, but isn't there a rule that if social distancing cannot be maintained or cannot be done, that we could mandate masks?
I'm not aware of that. That's not, that's not been guidance that's been provided to me.
I read some on the State Department. And my other question was, are the buses going to be fully loaded?
If we're under the green?
If we're under the green. And no masks?
Correct. Now, when you say no masks, again, you're, I think, I think it's, it's up to the parent and student, and if they feel that that's necessary, then we would support that. And our, we're going to have a number of our drivers and a number of our staff that wear masks, and that's going to be supported as well. But I can't, as director of schools, I can't mandate something that's not legal. And right now, it's not legal for me to enforce the mandatory use of masks.
And Matt, you know that I'm afraid for our kids, for our staffs. It's a major decision that you and the staff over there have had to do. I like to read all that. That was really interesting, but bottom one, we're all human beings, and that's our responsibility of those little kids and those. And, you know, I know kids are invincible, they think, and most people probably think that their kids are invincible, but they're, they're not. Oh, I would really want us to start back slow, like on yellow, and grow to green, you know, six weeks or nine weeks or whatever of yellow, that would get us through August, which the mandate is, you know, down to that.
Make good order.
Yeah. I would hope that we could, that, that we could do the yellow, because, I mean, you know, I read it, and prayed it, to the green. If we did the yellow, that would give us time to see whether we're going to be contagious to each other, whether we're going to spread it, whether we're going to be sick, whether we're not, and, and the summer then would be kind of close to being over with, and maybe it would all go, this would go away. I don't know if it'll ever go away, but anyway, that's how I feel.
Is this plan in alignment with our sister syst, our neighboring systems?
Absolutely.
They're all going green, too.
Oh, and we're only going green if the data allows us to stay green.
Right.
These levels are dependent upon the student data, that the COVID data cases that are prevalent in our, in our county. So... These levels are dependent upon the student data, that the COVID data cases that are prevalent in our in our county, so.
But as as of right now, our plan is because of the cases for the last two weeks that we are under the green, we would be under the green, right?
For for example, Hamlin County, sixteen seventeen page plan. They surveyed their parents, they've got a large amount of parents that wanna go online, so they're developing an online uh curriculum and and resources for those, but everybody else is returning to school. That's as an example.
Sullivan County, I think, are doing a operative press release at one thirty today with Bristol City, Bristol City, Sullivan County, and Kingsport City.
Right.
To uh identify their plan.
Gonna be real similar to this. If we've been in collaboration with the with regional superintendents, like I said, I'm on a conference call with them every Wednesday, I missed today is because of this board meeting, but uh every Wednesday at ten o'clock. And and a large amount of those meetings have been attended by David Kersky, who is our our Tennessee Department of Health Regional Health Director.
I understand that. And I think uh I've, I don't know why, but I've been getting calls from people in southwest Virginia. I understand, my understanding from them, Scott County is going to go Monday, Tuesday, out Wednesday, go Thursday, Friday on extended days. I think they have, if I understood this right, they're they're gonna be in the classroom at seven fifteen and they're gonna be released sometime around five o'clock.
I read Virginia's plan last night, I looked at uh which county, but it did list that that exact plan, and they're splitting the kids up.
But we got, you know.
No, we're not planning that if we do go yellow, that uh we would do an extended day like that. I mean, I taught school that way and went to school that way and kids, little kids, you know, you've got them in there from seven fifteen to five fifteen.
Under under our yellow plan for instruction, under the yellow phase, we would look at this operational hours, we would just group A, group B, and we would keep. So if the Smiths are on group A, all the Smith kids are gonna be on group A. So that we minimize, we we keep the schedules very similar, because look, we not only, we not only had to weigh the health concerns of our students, we also had to and we listened to our parents who largely said, if you close schools, I can't go to work. I can't, I don't have the ability to have daycare, I don't have family presence, I don't have those types of things, so all of those things were considered as part of the plan, our preference. And it aligns with the state and surrounding school systems is if the data maintains or decreases and we're able to stay in green, that we're gonna open our schools. If the data suggests or increases and uptick in those cases, we may open in yellow or we may not open. But as of this point in time, that's why there's three phases listed in the plan. So that's what was misleading in the newspaper article, it's not a foregone conclusion that we're gonna start the year in green.
I see. I read the article, too.
It'd be our desire, and I think everybody in the community would desire not only for us to be able to open, but to open safely. I think everybody's on the same page there, it's how do you make that happen? That's the critical piece.
I think that's basically my concern is, you know, uh in two weeks, we don't know what we're gonna have, or three weeks. Uh it's summertime and we're hoping that that works, but who knows?
That's the green phase.
Matt.
All the all the medical experts, they'll say we're years from from, maybe years from any solution to be. I mean, years.
That's why, as I shared with the board, we utilize our CARES Act money to not only purchase things that we can use now, but that get us into the future, because if this can, if this persists, we've gotta have technology and resources in place to accommodate a plethora of learning environments. Not only class, not only class to class, classroom environments that we typically have now, but online or or a hybrid situation, and that we're setting ourselves up for future success, making use of that one-time money. It's gonna take a while to get those devices in. That's one of the other reasons we're really hoping to open in green, because right now, we're not one-to-one. We've tried to get to that point, but funding has been funding, and we're close to it. We could, we could handle a lot of our grade ranges and a lot of our school sites could hand out those or check out those Chromebooks now, but not everybody could. And so we're dependent upon that CARES Act money that was approved several weeks ago, and we've already got the orders in. But a perfect world, if it's gonna get worse, we're able to open on green and we're able to spend a couple of weeks of getting things situated and getting our students to owe their teachers and and know our expectations, and then if something happens, we're set and we can roll with the punches as they come.
Matt. I've had a couple of of teachers uh ask me a couple of different questions that uh I promised I would ask. Uh one of them is if if we were to start the school year in the yellow phase with the desks facing the same direction and spaced apart, what about classrooms with no desks? For example, kindergarten uh that has tables, four kids per table that aren't six feet apart. How does that, how does that happen in the yellow phase?
We're under the yellow phase, then we would have half the students in that classroom, so a typical table of four would be a table of two spread out.
Okay, okay, and the other, the other question that was posed to me was could we not set a deadline for full virtual learning and see how that impacts each school's number of physical students? Then if a school has a large amount of virtual students per grade level, have that grade level teacher record and teach through Google Classroom?
Set a deadline for parents to notify us who who would want the virtual offering?
I I I gathered that's what she's asking, yes.
Yeah, I I have no problem with that, and we have discussed that, that's probably something we're going to be discussing over the several weeks in that continuous learning program. Uh with school starting on August fourth, we would wanna get that survey out ASAP to try to get those numbers, but as I've stated, in our in our initial survey, which ended two weeks ago, we had eleven percent, I think, uh in in I think eleven percent that were concerned about returning to school and would potentially want uh some sort of of virtual offering other than the Virtual Academy, because again, uh if if we're going to sign students up for the Virtual Academy, we want them to um we want them to commit to a semester, because we're actually paying for those resources and they're very, very rigorous, and again, it's not for everybody.
The Hamlin County, I I know that they're they're giving a choice to the students, they can either do at-home learning or go to the brick and mortar schools. Is that an option for us? To get, to give our parents a choice?
That goes back to that previous question, um that's why we surveyed parents. When when we got back, eleven percent that were somewhat concerned, we didn't feel like that was a large amount enough, a large enough portion of the population to allot resources to that end. We have a lot of teachers that uh would require some sort of initial training to head toward the virtual train, the the virtual teaching, that's why we're making use of edgenuity and nice longer at this current time. It, like I've shared with the board, though, my desire would be that we have teachers teaching in the classroom and virtually in-house, and that's what we wanna work toward, and I think this year, given the situation, we're ramping that plan up big time. But yes, I would, that's that's uh that's something that we would definitely be open to.
Okay, thank you.
And Matt? Yes, well, I just had a question. If um if parents do decide that they don't feel safe, then then do they call central office, do they call the principal, do that, what do they do?
Yes, the they they should reach out to the school site first, but as I shared earlier, we're right in the middle of of summer break for some of our staff, so my guidance would be that if parents are having those questions, they can't get a hold or or a return phone call from the school sites, that they should contact the central office.
Okay, alright.
Look in my office, he's been talking, he's listening.
This this, and I know, I I just wanna summarize close by saying that this is a, these are decisions that we didn't take lightly, I think we've worked a total of four and a half weeks on these um on these plans. They're not perfect, no plan is perfect, there's going to be what-ifs, there's going to be situations that we encounter throughout the school year. But this provides us a framework from which to act if needed, and and that was our goal. Uh I don't wanna shoehorn us into or back us into any corner that uh prevents us from being flexible and edit our plan as necessary, and that's one thing that I wanted to leave with, we're we're open to continued input, we've gotten a lot of input, we've gotten a lot of feedback, we've gotten a lot of questions and um and and great ideas that are implemented in this, a lot of those came from parents, the the attendance incentive came from a parent two weeks ago. And that was something that we hadn't considered about the finals testing piece, but we were able to take that consideration um and look at it uh from that viewpoint, and it made a lot of sense, and you saw that work its way into the plan, so we've tried to implement as much input as we've as we've been able to do in this plan, but give ourselves wiggle room should the details and should the specifics of what's happening during the school year change.
Matt, can I just say this, because you know how I feel, and and I made that clear that I would prefer we went back on the yellow. But what you're saying to all of us right now is, according to the data, according to the recommendations from the government, all the health, blah, 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 then we are under the green lights. But that doesn't mean that in two weeks, if the data, if the rate goes up, that we don't move to the yellow or even to the red.
Right.
So what you're asking from us, from me even, to vote is to just say you have a plan? And I'm, I'm trying to make it till I can agree with everything here.
So so to clarify, you're not voting on
How?
I desire to open under green. To open, you're not, you're not, you're not giving of your approval to allow my staff and I to conduct school in a normal fashion in spite of any data that may occur between now and the first part of the year. Your your vote to approve this plan today simply states that Matt and his staff have a plan for operations and they're gonna continue working on it and providing details for site-to-site operations with the idea that data will drive the decisions. There may be a point at time that we open in yellow. There may be that we can open in green, and it may be that we do not open only virtually.
But you have to put it in a way. I have a quick question, though.
And that other people are gonna understand.
Yes, and and the there, there's been articles, there's been articles, there's been articles and rumors that have that have been very confusing and contradictory to one another, that's why we wanted to get this out in writing, because it clearly states that if the data shows we have an uptick and we're above that threshold or baseline, we're going to move to yellow. If if we are significantly above that and consistently above that, we will work with our health department to make a choice to, as a last resort, close and go full virtual, but those three plans are are developed across the spectrum to accommodate for that.
If we do have a upswing like Hamlin County that had, what was it, thirty-nine fifty-nine cases, uh you know, all Johnson County, I think they had an upswing, and that's one day. That takes our fourteen days of under ten out, right?
It could, but if you're at one point two and you see an uptick to twenty point something, you still may be the next day under the baseline. Because it's a fourteen-day rolling average of new cases.
Okay.
Per one hundred thousand students or residents.
And that meaning?
Yes. Yeah, so our numbers, our sampling number is smaller because our overall population is smaller, so they they adjust that ratio to accommodate for overall total population. I understand it anyway, I mean, we were just given that information about two weeks ago.
Okay. I have a quick question. Have I apologized? But have we seen anything, have we tried to send anything out, like to pick if they're talking with their children and trying to educate them and ensuring that they're taking proper precautions then school starts, or have, do we have the capability of doing that?
The last, the last communication we sent home on on what to look for and that type of thing at home was in the spring prior to closure and during closure, we sent out and posted numerous bulletins on that, but we would continue those and instigate those right away.
A lot of people just kinda think really going on.
Correct, and they changed, they, you know, for for example, the the prior guidance wasn't to necessarily look for gastrointestinal illness, but now it is, that's included, that's just an example of the changes that you see taking place, so when we get those updates, we will send those out, but we, but and that goes back to a great point, Jackie, we we need to partner with parents to be successful in any plan, whether we open on yellow, green, or red. Whether we're operating in the classroom or virtually, we have to communicate and partner with parents in order for this to be successful, just like we would in any normal situation. We have to partner with parents, but more so now.
And I also think by giving them this plan and letting them know, you know, they can be more prepared for whatever happens, if, you know, and and I watch the news. I wish everybody would watch and and actually know what's going on. But, okay, go ahead. I'm not gonna say anything. Okay. I'm through.
We're all in this together, folks. This board, this administration, these teachers, these students, these parents. We're all in this together, and decisions that we have to make, like I said at the beginning of this meeting, it's not a very easy decision. Let's face it, there could be lives. Simple truth. But we got to move forward, and with me saying that, what I've noticed, what I have noticed, the information that was presented today, options have been put in place. Lots of options. A commitment from our system to work with the parents for the safety and educational concerns of their students. Think that speaks volumes. I would like to put it before this board that I asked form of a motion to approve the plan as presented by the director of school. As staff.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Jackie got it, uh just because of the delay, Mr. Larkin, I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Oh, with, and I just wanna make one comment to this motion in the discussion section. If at all possible, I would like to see some extra time built in, and principals, don't kill me on this. Some extra time scheduled at the end of the school day to accommodate parents to come in for meetings. This is gonna be a stressful time, especially the first month of schools.
To that point, one thing that I excluded, and I'm glad you brought that up, the first two and a half days of school this year, if we're back in school. But if we open August fourth, we're in the green phase, we're able to bring students back, the first two and a half days will be devoted to not only training students on the new protocols, cleaning their desk, cleaning their hands, taking care of one another, those types of things, but also of walking our parents through the site-specific details. Now, again, this is in, this is a framework for the school system, this is not school-specific, because we want school-specific plans and details laid out by elementary, middle, and high school, because you're dealing with different age of kids and different logistics. So that's what our next phase of implementation and design is gonna be. Um so with that thought, I give up a little instructional time that first week, but the first week is gonna be dedicated to parents and school communication. Those first two and a half days, along with what you said.
Yeah, and and I hope I clarified. Most of our staff leave by four o'clock. I mean, that need to set some couple of days a week at the beginning of school to where we've got someone there till six o'clock as parents work. And they can't get off work to come during the day.
Well, Chris, if they needed that.
Yeah, they could call and schedule.
Call and schedule, and if there's nobody scheduled.
But that's not part of the motion, that was just best for moving forward, so with no further discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In the discussion phase, I would like to request that, and and this, I don't want it to affect your motion, because I agree. In the discussion phase, I, I would like to request that, and, and this, I don't, don't want it to affect your motion because I agree with it. Uh, is there any way possible that we could ask each individual school administration, principal and, and vice principal to perhaps consider coming in a week early, week and a half early? And us compensate them? I'm not asking them to come in on their own time to compensate them. So we can kinda be there, cause there's parents already wanting to know right now, how do I do this? But, but is it possible we could ask the principals to come in early? And let's try to tackle this head-on right now, since we're less than thirty days to school starting?
If I'm not mistaken, I'm gonna handle this. I'll a- answer this, but if I'm wrong. Principals will be coming back to the schools within the next week. As they're, they're twelve, twelve months? Oh, the principals will be back at the sixteenth of July already, because they're eleven-month employees.
Okay. I, I'm just thinking sooner, sooner the better.
I agree.
Uh, what, what we can do, Mr. Larkin's on that end, is that they are here the sixteenth. We have a PD Professional Development Day with, uh, Special Education in the morning that afternoon. We're working on our continuous learning plan with them that afternoon. And then we don't take them away from their sites until the twenty-third, where we are going to bring everybody back together to finalize that CLP for the state. Uh, those are the only two partial days that we're going to require of them. The rest of that time will be at their school sites.
Alright.
If, if, if that helps, if that answers some of the concerns there.
I, 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 I'm just getting calls right now that they're trying to get ahold of somebody at the schools. Of course, I'm telling them that they're not there yet, but I, I know they're gonna be, be inundated with a lot of response after the, today's message.
But what we could do too is we could put on the website that, uh, that principals and staff will be coming back. And then we can list the dates for the principals and the staff, uh, and make that clear for, uh, for our parents.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Kathy, I can't see you. I just, I just wanna call on you and make sure you're okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Here, I, I've got one last thing I wanna say. I've sat here and listened to all of this, and I've watched the TVs and the radios, read the newspapers and everything else, and I'm, I personally am uncomfortable. The reason I'm not is I believe there'll be too many kids lost in the, in the rush. Cause I can, I can attest personally, with a little nine-year-old that hadn't looked at a frog. And her mom had had both worked, so who's gonna be there to do that virtual stuff with her? Who's gonna be there to see that she gets that done? I'm gonna say that ninety percent of the kids that are out there in that situation are not gonna do it. They're not gonna do it. And so, then we're failing them, so from my point of view, that's just me.
Well, uh, I, I do, I do share that. I, I understand the concern. And we have really toiled over the fact of our special needs, our kindergarten through second grade, and in which case, I'm assuming that's a second grader or a second grader going to third grade.
Or going to fourth.
Oh, third, okay, so. If that's the case, we, we have our most vulnerable population of students, if you, that term, accounted for even in the red phase, as long as we're able to do so.
Well, I'm almost sure, I'm almost sure she's not ready to go to the fourth. That's not my call, cause if it was, she wouldn't go.
And, and it is a concern across the board. Anytime we shift from classroom instruction to virtual, the lack of parental support because of working schedules and that type of thing, um, come into play, and it's a big worry. It's a, it, it was a big worry when we had to close in March and we never reopened. And, and we all saw the good and the bad that resulted from that. But we, our, our mandate was to provide options for continuous education, and that's our, that's what we had to come up with a plan for. And, and what you have there is, is a plan. It doesn't mean that we're going to necessarily stick with the group A, group B, but that's the best option that we could come with, come up with at this time. Uh, reflective of input we've received from our own staff and, and parents. They felt that two days together coming to school was better than one hundred percent virtual jumping from classroom to one hundred percent, because at least two days out of the week, they, they knew where their students were going, and that's less, that's two days less that they'd have to come up with, uh, daycare or guidance for their, for their education at home.
And if we call the road, please?
Barles? Christian?
Yes.
Craddock?
Yes.
Gates?
Oh.
Barkins?
Yes.
Haddon?
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Ocean Pies is, ladies and gentlemen, it's not an easy decision, but we've gotta move forward. We've gotta educate our children, and we got, this plan is not an easy plan to put together. There's no right or wrong answer, cause we don't know. We just gotta move forward. We have anything else before this board?
We adjourn.